Make sure you're loud.
Okay, good evening all and welcome to the September 14th, 2021 Business Meeting of the Board of Education. I would like to start with the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag, the United States of America, and to your Republic, for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Okay, we're all familiar with the emergency exits. Two over there and two through the back and through the kitchen. I need an motion for approval of the Order of Agenda, please.
Motion.
I need a second.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Um, pristine clerk's report.
Thank you. For the approval of minutes of the last meeting, be it resolved that the Board of Education accepts the minutes of the special meeting held September 1st, 2021.
I need a motion, please.
Motion.
I need a second.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Motion passes. Public comment speakers will be recognized who wish to address the Board on agenda items only. I think we have anybody here for that. Oh, wait. Okay, we will start with Mr. Clemenson and his report.
Good evening, good evening, Ms. Vargas and family, Mr. DeRosa, Ms. Dalton, the rest of you who are always here, welcome. Let me turn and talk to the Board of Education. So, welcome to the 2021 school year. We're four days in. We have a little bit lighter of a business agenda tonight because we had our meeting on September 1st to take care of a lot of the personnel matters and the business resolutions that we needed in order to get the year started. So, with just a quick four days, we jump right back in. So, it's besides what we see on our faces, the year feels like normal. There's many, many normal aspects of the school year and we're thankful for that. We have all of our students in school every day, who are medically able to be in school every day. We have activities taking place. You know, you hear the whistle and you see the kids in games, go home and away. Our clubs are gearing up. The first clubs that really hit the ground running are our class advisors and our classes and student council as they start working on homecoming and getting ready for all of the spirit and community festivities that we have planned. So, we are doing a, we are, we are operating with the mindset and the action that this is a normal school year for kids and there's opportunities for them to take advantage of beginning day one. So, we're in day four now and on your slides, you can just see a couple of pictures that illustrate we were under the lights, our soccer team, our security drills are taking place. We had fire drills today, both drills and real ones that we had to look into, but everything's fine. We had a 9/11 remembrance ceremony, something that is really super important to us as a school district and has been for 20 years. It was a challenge this year because we started school on September 9th and Friday was September 10th and then Saturday was September 11th. But when I came to Hampton Bay's Elementary School, who really are our hosts for the 9/11 ceremony, and I said, "Oh my goodness, this is, this is coming quickly when we start the school year." Mr. Meyer, Mr. T., Mrs. McNamara in the 4th grade gave me a chuckle and said, "Mr. Clemenson, you worry too much. We were already on this in May and June." So, they were ready to go. They had readers who had already done the work on Patriots' Day and identifying local community heroes. And we had the opportunity to recognize those readers on our Facebook every morning at 8:45, so that is a symbolic time when the terrible terrorist attacks of 9/11 began. Every morning at 8:45 for seven days, beginning September 11th, all the way through this Friday, we have 4th grade readers reading about local heroes and Patriots' Day and reflections on a national event that took place long before they were born. We only have one child in this school district who was born just a few months before 9/11. For everybody else, they, no one remembers it. And even that little, that now 20-year-old doesn't remember it, but there's no, there's not a never forget component to this for our kids. It is a continue to teach and make sure that this is relevant. So, you can see the bottom right-hand picture on the slides there. That's the 9/11 Memorial Garden at Hampton Bay's Elementary School. So, our, our proud partners at the Hampton Bay's Fire Department really invested in making that a special place. And last year installed, last year or the year before, installed a beautiful flagpole there to balance out the campus. And all of our 4th grade classes on Friday, September 10th, took the opportunity to have a lesson outside around Patriots' Day and around these events. And all buildings engaged in a number of age-appropriate activities. So, Mr. Richard and Mr. Shug facilitated moments of silence and then important and relevant conversations in social studies class and throughout the day. So, when we hit the ground running, we really do, not just with the basics, but with the elements of the living classroom that are important to us. In March of 2020, February of 2020 actually, was our last living classroom ceremony with our veterans. We, while that's, we consider that on pause, not something that is in the past. So, looking to maintain or bring that back safely in the, in the months ahead. So, we did hit the ground running. We have amazing new faculty and staff members with us and it feels great to be back. Enrollment, we are about 2,003 students, so hovering right at that 2,000 mark. This is a little bit of the tide receding. We expected this because you look at the bottom of that chart and we have high numbers of kids in 9th and 10th and 11th grade and 12th grade. And our little ones are some of the littlest numbers, so 120 kindergartens, 134 first graders. So, largely when the numbers stay pretty consistent, once they start in the school district, while the faces may change, kids leave, kids come, these are essentially the cohorts without major disruption unless there's some sort of major circumstance going on. But we can expect that in October, I'll give you a more in-depth presentation on enrollment projections that we have typically done every year, we're going to see a little bit of a receding enrollment, declining enrollment. So, little bit each year, you know, like watching your child grow. You don't necessarily see it in the moment, but you see it when you look over a period of time. So, 2003, super comfortable in the elementary and middle school, a little cozy in this building. This is a little bit of a high watermark for us. It's 729 kids, but that is the high watermark and it's going to start to move down a little bit. And the way, the way, what that gives the Board of Education and the community and our faculty and leadership team, the opportunity to do, and we'll get into this more in October, is to really think about, we're entering a new phase of identity in the Hampton Bay's School District. For as long as a number of us have been here, 15, 20 years, we've experienced budgets, not in the last couple of years, but we've experienced budget years where the addition of faculty or staff was enrollment-driven. We need to add another class, we need to add another kindergarten, a 6th grade class. We're not in that phase at this moment, or we won't be in the next five to seven years. And so, it's an opportunity to start a conversation around what are the elements that are important to education that we might not have been able to tackle because of realities we were facing at that point. Class sizes will either stabilize or go down in some instances. There may be new programs that this community feels are important. We've brought on pre-K and culinary and hospitality, computer science, computer coding in the elementary and middle school. Really great opportunity for Board to engage this conversation in the next coming years. So, I'll continue to show this slide month to month. We're 2,003 Baymen and we are so happy to have them back. Our pre-Ks are back to full capacity again, just kids and scope, right down the hallway here, working with Ms. Meyer and the Early Childhood Education Program as well. The COVID Case Tracker, the slide that will also be here each month is, and we don't have enough to give Mr. Ferraro the opportunity to start building graphs and charts and things like that, but we have seven cases cumulatively so far since September 1st that we're managing. That's roughly half a case a day, or a case every other day. 18 students are currently on quarantine or isolation. This has become something we just live with at this point. We're doing everything we can to move past this quicker than not, hopefully, but what was a stop everything and manage in September and October and November of last year and certainly into the winter months when we were, in one day, we had, I think, 10 cases that came in, really stopped everything where we had to go remote or contact tracing, all of those things. We've made a lot of progress and so this has become part of our, unfortunately, but it's become part of our management in daily operations. We identify a case, we contact traces we need to. If kids are quarantined, then a whole instructional piece kicks in and I'm going to ask Mr. Carlson to join me up here in just a moment to talk about what happens when a child goes into quarantine. So, last year, we called it remote instruction. We don't have the remote option, you know, some, some kids, we, I talked to a senior the other day who was so excited to be back, he said he hadn't been in school since Friday, March 13th, 2020. He was fully remote last year. He just was so eager and excited to be back, signing up for the SATs, and it was, it was like rebirth again for him. So, we don't have that remote option, we call it quarantine instruction. Depending on when you were the last close contact or the positive case, you could be anywhere from one day in quarantine all the way to 10 days in quarantine. And at that point, there's a continuity of instruction that takes place. So, I'm going to turn it to Mr. Carlson for a few minutes to talk about that.
Thank you, Mr. Clemenson. First, wanted to start off with thanking the Board for the investment in technology. It's been such a large investment, but something that has been a huge benefit for our students, our staff. Also want to thank our tech team for the heavy lift of getting, you know, Chromebooks, you know, out there, organized distribution and making sure that everything works day to day, led by Eric Ferraro as well. I also want to thank our teachers. You know, first couple of days, you should just be, get through the grading PLC, give out textbooks and let's move on. It's now become even to our youngest students where we need to teach them how to log in. No applications, get ready to livestream as soon as possible. And just this past week, you know, our kindergarten students have left with a QR code that they can scan with a camera and log in as soon as they get home to utilize the devices that have been distributed. And you think about that in just a short time, how incredible that has been and what a large operation that is to manage. I can't thank everyone enough for really that team effort to get this done. So, our, as Mr. Clemenson said, we moved from remote instruction to quarantine instruction. This plan is going to be sent out to families as of tomorrow so that they can understand that if their child is quarantined in the future, what they can expect. We did open this up as of today and we are going to get some feedback from parents and students to see how this has worked. So, when a child is identified as quarantined, parents will receive an email with the instructions on what will, what they can expect over the next, you know, eight to 10 days that their child might be out. Students are also going to be invited to a specific quarantine instruction Google classroom, which gives them access to a specific Google Meet to really streamline and get them to understand where to show up to get these supportive sessions. In kindergarten through 4th grade, there's live remote instruction that will happen both in the morning and in the afternoon with a designated staff member to give that instruction that collaborates with the team so that the child can stay on pace while they're out. In 5th and 6th grade, it's similar, but we don't have the morning session. We only have it in the afternoon, but it lasts for an hour and a half, which is beyond the homebound instruction mandate that New York State dictates K to four students, a K to six students to require, to receive. 7 through 12 is a little bit of a different model. The reason is because we have so many classes that go on from 7 to 12, electives as well, AP classes, things like that. So, specifically this year, quarantined students will be given access to livestream instruction to observe throughout the school day. And students will log on, mics muted, but will be able to see and hear the lesson throughout the day. To allow a student to get the support needed, especially because of how rigorous some of the curriculum does become, is those students will also be given office hours Monday through Thursday at designated times with specific certified teachers in those areas. So, they get, you know, another layer of support throughout our, throughout our secondary level. And again, what we'll do is we'll send out notification to parents tomorrow with this plan so they can know what to expect and ask questions before the event may occur where their child is quarantined. Any questions from the Board? Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Carlson. Tonight, under Personnel, you have a number of staff, faculty members who will approve, or it's our recommendation that you approve, for COVID quarantine instruction. These people are ready to go with, they're committing to being ready to go with 24 hours' notice. So, it's a remarkable group of people. Some of this was tested last year and we continue to refine. So, if we have to adapt and overcome, we'll do that. So, if there are frustration or pain points that we can't see until we're in it, the, the feedback is critical. Whether this is in a set it and forget it, this is the plan for the year. We're going to adapt and the funding for this, because it is an additional expense, the funding for this comes from the Coronavirus Relief and Response Act. So, the federal monies will pay for the evening office hours to have our staff dedicated and ready to do that for kids at night. That's what that federal allotment of money was for, things like that, to preserve continuity instruction for kids who need to be quarantined or isolated. So, thank you, Mr. Carlson, for putting that together. I'll turn it over to Larry over here to talk briefly about finance and operations, please.
Thank you, Mr. Clemenson. Just a couple quick things. Independent auditors are in, they're wrapping up their review of our financial statements for the fiscal year 21, 2021. Next month, we'll be setting our reserves and our final tax levy in, at our October Board meeting. I did get information from the Town Tax Assessor. The tax assessment for the entire district stayed pretty much where we thought it was going to be back in May. So, it looks like things will be about the way we, we thought it would play out. There will be no tax increase due to the school budget for this year, no tax rate increase due to the school budget this year. So, taxes should be about the same as, as they were in the past year. Moody's reaffirmed our district rating of AA3. It's been that way for the past couple of years, but they reaffirm that. And we've been filing the, for the federal COVID relief grants, the final one we have to file is due by the end of the month and we're working on that one now. That's about it. Any, any questions?
All right. Larry's in heavy paperwork mode because the year-end closing documents are all due, October 15th and November 15th, so those glasses come in handy. COVID vaccination and testing, so this will be, this will be a slide that probably stays up with us each month as well. Updated information on the number of people, the percent of people who are vaccinated in Hampton Bay's as of September 13th, 77% have received a first dose and almost 69% have completed their series, whether that's Johnson &amp; Johnson first dose or Moderna and Pfizer. That number jumps up about 2% every 15 days. So, I looked back at our last discussion on this and it was 66% and 74%. So, it is eking up, so the number of people getting vaccinated is moving as the days go on. CDC recommends anybody who's eligible for a vaccine, who's 12 years and older at this point, become vaccinated. It's at the discretion of the adult, there's not a vaccine mandate. But New York State has mandated weekly COVID testing for school staff, for all school staff, bus drivers, kitchen employees, staff, faculty, leadership administration. Weekly COVID testing to begin this month with an opt-out provision if the staff member's fully vaccinated. So, we've been, we've been anticipating this and have been preparing for this. The county at this time is not making a provision for this to be done in-house, similar to how we had done athletic testing and yellow zone testing last year. So, at this point, any staff members who have decided not to opt out for whatever reason will be required to submit weekly negative COVID testing. We anticipate that beginning no sooner than next week, so not this week. Once a week, the staff member would need to submit that test that has their name on it and their result, and that test can be up to seven days old. So, for example, if it's due Friday, they can have until the previous Saturday to get that done at their convenience. Again, at this point, there's not the option to do that in school here. Things continue to change, we continue to maximize our partnerships where that could be something that, that happens at some point. We're trying to make mandates and regulations as easily digestible for everybody. The number one goal is to just keep moving forward with our school year. We're going to do what we need to do to do that and this is a mandate. It is not a discretion for the school district, it's not a school discretion for Larson. There is a component of school-based surveillance testing of students that's recommended by the Department of Health. So, we're working with our county partners to establish what that might look like. Consistent in the region, surveillance testing might be asymptomatic testing of a percentage of students every week or every two weeks, for example. So, you would just kind of take the temperature, literally, I guess, take the temperature of the school, get any asymptomatic folks quarantined and isolated as they need to be, and, and then move on. That is a provision by county regulation, or we may be able to do that in school. So, again, I'll continue to give updates on this. The reopening page will have always the most up-to-date information that we have. Bring transportation to you because I want to know if any of you want a job as a bus driver in the morning or the afternoon. There is a national, of all the national challenges we face right now, school bus driver is the one none of us saw coming, right? There is a shortage of the important bus drivers. They're the first face to see our kids in the morning and sometimes the last to see them in the afternoon. So, it's an important role to have the right people on that job and there is a national shortage. Some districts around the country are giving families money to not bring their kids. I'm not recommending that. The National Guard in Massachusetts is driving buses and there is, there is a shortage. Montar Bus is a remarkable partner of ours and has been for a number of years. They're hiring, they'll train, there's opportunities for growth and advancement there. In the meantime though, families need to be, continue to be flexible and patient with us if a bus run is late or if we have to use one bus twice and go back and get kids and we're going to do as much as we can to minimize impact. But I was talking to our athletic director last night at 9:15 as we're moving athletic buses and talking to our Mr. Rand early this morning about combining routes as well. So, transportation continues to be a challenge. We did, at the end of last year, purchase a nine-person, nine-passenger van. It was really a 15-passenger van, but it had to be modified a little bit for school purposes. It is not able to be used to bring kids to and from school, but we can use it for school activities. So, for example, today, because of the logistics of getting a bus to our golf team, we were not going to be able to compete in the full golf match this afternoon, is before it gets dark. We have this van, eight golfers and the driver, put them in the van and got them out of here right at dismissal. We have safety checks, license checks, physicals, the, the van has a fire extinguisher, first aid kit, flares, all sorts of protocols and protections that have been put in place to make sure that we're transporting kids safely and not just jumping in a car and going. There's, there are, there is a structure that Mr. Ferraro and Mr. Luce worked on. So, we're walking before we run with this, we're starting with the golf team and then the possibilities are endless on, on where that can go. Okay, so transportation continues to be a challenge. I will wrap up with just two quick things. Number one, the 21-22 school calendar. We're in it now and when we're approving these calendars in February, the next school year still seems pretty abstract. So, I want to start with this conversation. This is a tight calendar when you look at that. We had Rosh Hashanah, we had a late Labor Day, a Rosh Hashanah holiday on Tuesday and Wednesday of last week, and then the start of school. East End school districts face a challenge of starting before Labor Day. We hear from our business partners who are very important to us in this community, college kids leave mid-August and they rely very heavily on our high school kids and high school families to be working. Schools starting before Labor Day is a significant challenge to many of our families who are working not only for their businesses, but also for themselves to have money for their lives. So, starting before Labor Day was a challenge. The district's commitment to recognizing Rosh Hashanah and letting families observe that important holiday was important. There is a state and federal law and the opportunity for us as a community to recognize Juneteenth, the official date to commemorate the abolition of slavery. That's Monday, June 20th. Where, where the calendar fell tightens it up a little bit. And so, this year, the key message is two things. Number one, this year, there are 180 school days built in for kids and 182 staff days built in for staff. If we use, if we don't use any snow days, we're not going to put days back in that Memorial Day like we would normally do in years past. So, just want to say that out loud right now to the folks watching at home who are wringing their hands and shaking their fists at Larson. If we don't use snow days, they're not getting added back into the calendar like they had been in the past. If we use more than two snow days, we will pivot to remote instruction at that point. And Mr. Carlson has that schedule built. We dusted off from last year and we go to remote instruction so that we don't continue to eat into established vacations that families may already have made immovable plans for. So, two snow days built in. It looks like sneak peek, the 22-23 school year is also going to have only two snow days built into it as well. So, tonight, members, you will approve the Board of Education, under Board of Education section, the amended calendar. We'll email that out to everybody and we'll have it posted on our website as well. Reopening at HV schools continues to be the email that goes to our leadership team if you have questions or concerns that can't be handled by your building principal or your child's teacher. So, we continue to spread that message out to the community. Tonight, we are going to recommend confering tenure on our friend and colleague, Ms. Yowelli Vargas, one of our high school social workers, and I'm going to leave that opportunity to Mr. Richard, who's going to talk to, to, to talk to you all and present Yowelli's candidacy to you tonight. Has been a remarkable, Yowelli has been a remarkable addition. I'm going to say a few things. Then you can. A remarkable addition to institutionalizing the importance of school social work and mental health and wellness for our kids. So, the, when a Board of Education votes for tenure by state law, it is an important, important decision. And so, many, there are many instances where it's not the right match and folks move on and they go find a different place to succeed. Not the case with Yowelli. And so, I get to say it in front of your family and Mr. Richard does as well. So, I'm excited to present to her, her candidacy for tenure to you with Mr. Richard in our Personnel section. Any questions on the various items tonight? Okay, thank you, everybody.
Thank you. Okay, we will move on to the business and finance. We're going to do a consent agenda from 4A to 4B. I need a motion, please.
Motion.
I need a second.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Motion passes. Student Services, CSA, all right, just on 5A, I need a motion, please.
Motion.
I need a second.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Motion passes. Now, we will get to Personnel and we will go to Mr. Richard.
Thank you, Mr. Springer. First though, I want to start by welcoming Yowelli's family, who's joining us here this evening. We have mom and dad and Yowelli's sisters to, to join us for this very important event in Yowelli's professional life. Four years ago, Eric and I had an opportunity to interview Yowelli in the main office and if you try and hire teachers, support staff members, members of your counseling team in the month of September, any principal will tell you, it, it can be a challenge. And to say the words that we got lucky would be the, the overstatement of my career. I remember we interviewed Yowelli and she walked out of the office and Eric looked at me and he's like, "Could this have happened any better?" And it got better every single day from there. She has literally been a savior for kids in Hampton Bay's High School. And I have been with Yowelli through some pretty challenging situations and we've done home visits together, okay, and helped kids that were in crisis. We helped kids that were just having a tough time with, with the stress of managing all their responsibilities. responsibilities. And every single bit of it has been managed with incredible care, compassion, and thoughtfulness by Yowelli. And she is, she is a staple here at Hampton Bay's High School. I don't know how this building functioned the way that it did before Yowelli arrived. And each and every day, she continues to up her game and just make Hampton Bay's High School a better place for kids. Larry, on a personal note, you really should be charging co-pays for Yowelli's services because most of the faculty and staff at some point goes to Yowelli for the nervous breakdowns. I'm just saying, you know, and I'm always looking to help you out with the budget, you know? So, and Yowelli earns that many, many times over. So she's a roommate of ours in the main office, and ever since she arrived in the building, the main office is alive with kids that are either going in there smiling and just going to say hi to Ms. Vargas, or going in there because they really need help and support. And it is just, it's an incredible place to be because of you. So mom, dad, sisters, thank you for sharing Yowelli with us. I cannot tell you the numbers of ways from working with our newcomers in the Bienvenidos Club to the Case Closet Program with the leadership team. There are kids that literally have clothes on their back and food in their bellies because of the work your door does. So it is without any hesitation whatsoever that I offer my highest possible recommendation for Yowelli for tenure. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Richard. Okay, we will do just a 6A vote. We will need a motion.
Motion.
We need a second.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Motion passes. Congratulations.
Congratulations.
Thank you. Okay, then we will do a consent agenda from 6B to 6J. Unless there's any questions, I need a motion.
Motion.
I need a second.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Motion passes. 7A, approval of the amended calendar. I need a motion.
Motion.
I need a second.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Motion passes. Public comment persons may address the Board of Education on any matters of interest or concern. The Board President will recognize all speakers. Time limits may be imposed based upon agenda needs. Do we have any comments? Eric, nothing? Okay. With that being said, I need a motion to adjourn the meeting.
Motion.
I need a second.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Motion passes. Thank you again. Yowelli, congratulations. Thank you for everything. Truly appreciate it.